Republic or we wish you stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Take a moment of silence. People in Ukraine. Thank you. We don't know what we've lost. Democracy is works well here in our city and in our nation. Special presentations. We have a resolution. Women's History Month of March twenty twenty two. Resolution is whereas women of every race, religion, class, sexuality, ethnic background that made historic contributions to the growth and strength of the United States and countless recorded and unrecorded ways. Whereas American women served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement securing their own rights and suffrage and equal opportunity. Whereas Michigan women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural and social roles to advance our state, helping to create a more fair and just society. Whereas despite advances, the role of women in our history is still overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching and study of American history. And whereas there are many strong women in the city of Hazel Park who have and will continue to empower others, inspire fellow women and create history right here in our backyard. And whereas women in the city of Hazel Park are not afraid to overcome challenges, become leaders and break barriers. And whereas we take this opportunity to honor the countless record and round recorded achievements of the city Hazel Park women as they do to make history and seen and unseen and made in ways each day. Now therefore be resolved, the city Hazel Park hereby recognizes March seventh, twenty twenty two as Women History Month and Day of City Hazel Park. May it be proclaimed. Would Mr. Gary Makovich please come to the podium? Name and address to the record. Would you like to read this?
Sure. In Hazel Park, certificate of recognition awarded to Gary Makovich in recognition of your ongoing commitment and dedicated service to the city of Hazel Park, volunteering in excess of one thousand hours as the city of Hazel Park's hearing officer. Thank you for your efforts to ensure a safer Hazel Park. And and thank you. I mean, we've known each other now for, you know, almost forty years. We served together on the zoning board of appeals back in the nineteen eighties. And, you know, I want to thank you for your many years of dedicated and continuous service to the city of Hazel Park. You've been an outstanding hearing officer. You do a great job. For those of you who don't know, the hearing officer is he is the the step that happens before a voided or dilapidated property comes to the city council here in Hazel Park. He's a quasi judicial officer and he's done this job, volunteered his time, served the city of Hazel Park now for many years. On behalf of mayor and council and everyone here, we thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Gary, I got to say thank you. In the nineties, I joined the board as a young commissioner. And you helped me navigate my way through as a young commissioner, learning the ropes of how to be a good city commissioner at that time. And thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your service.
It's to the board. For Mr. City Mayor Campbell.
Good evening, everybody. Doug Campbell. So I know we did a resolution last time, but the actual date has now passed. And I'll be pat on the staff of the city of Hazel Park. We present this award to Edward Colbiter. Thank you, Seth. The rest of you in the city, thank you who came up. For twenty years of distinguished service as city manager. Thank you for your dedication, passion and leadership. We appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Again, I want to thank. Thank you. It is. Thank you. Thank you all. This may have been a long week speech last week or last month, March eight. I'll be very brief, but I will just reiterate, nobody ends up with a career for twenty years as city manager. It's not a great thing. I've been blessed with an outstanding team of department head and community employees throughout my tenure here. And I never could have been anywhere near as successful as I have been without their great talented leadership and dedicated service to the city. Likewise, there's nothing more important for a city's future than having an outstanding city council. And I'm blessed to work for and with five individuals that put the best interest of the city of Hazel Park above all else. And finally, my wife Diane is here in the audience. Took a picture of me, but I want to thank her. She's made many sacrifices throughout these years of my service to the city of Hazel Park. And she's been a great partner. I appreciate her very much. Again, the thanks is heartfelt. I read all the kind things that you guys said about me in the newspaper. And I'm going to have to work as hard now to live up to those comments for the rest of my tenure here. And I'll let you know of whom I very thank. One thing I did forget to mention last week, though, was a couple of important mentors that I had over the time. And, you know, one of those mentors was a former fire chief who's now passed away, Jim Karine, who was a great mentor to me. And the other one was a former police chief, Al Sato, who's happily retired in Florida. He was an extraordinary mentor to me and he was acting city manager for quite some time on two different occasions. And he was a wonderful friend and mentor who taught me many things. And I'm very grateful to both of them for the influence that they had on who I turned out to be in the job that I am doing. So again, I'll do my best. And also, I can't forget the wonderful residents of the city of Hazel Park who were smart enough to come to the city's rescue anytime that we needed help. And I think that you can see, you know, the success we've had in the past few years, that they were wise folks that they cast. They were the hero of their own story and were better off for it. Residents of all, the biggest hero of Hazel Park. So thank you all very much. But it's a great work done tonight. Do some great things for the city of Hazel Park. Thank you. Two second recess for me.
Move the recess. Department heads, come on up. Oh, come on. Go in the back. Scoot one more over there. Everybody say money.
Well, if I want to share to my story, I won't do that. That's it. Save the draft. Okay. One, two, three. Cool beans. Make sure to post it on my screen. Just go behind me. Is everybody in? Again, thank you all.
Move that rear return for recess. Support. Back onto our regular meeting. And now it moves to civic announcements. We have a person here that wants to speak, Stephanie Chain. I believe this is Senator.
Hi, everyone. My name is Stephanie Chain. I am the state senator in Detroit and Denver currently. Wanted to come and say hello. I also brought my daughter Sonja, who is becoming a pro at visiting city council meetings lately. But I just really want, I've met a number of you already, but just wanted to come and listen in and ask you here what was going on here in the city of Hazel Park with three districts in. I'm very eager and excited about the opportunity to hopefully be a partner to all of you. You have a great state senator currently in Jeremy Moss. And hoping to be able to learn as much as I can from him and honestly from all of you. Just a little bit of my background. Before I ran for office, worked for nonprofits, doing community organizing and advocacy where a mother of two children, extremely hard worker, strong trapper, crew of looking across the aisle to get things done. And just eager to continue being a voice in Lansing, in a new district, kind of district three, which will stretch from downtown Detroit up into west Warren, Sterling Heights, Hazel Park, Madison Heights, a little bit of Troy, Closette and Royal Oak. So just eager to listen in and be a partner to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck. The thing, Ms. Colbiter, was if some people want to speak. Is there any civic announcements from the audience? Civic announcements for the city from the audience? Any civic announcements from the city council? Civic announcements for the public discussion? We have Gloria Marlowe, Marlowe, three oh seven West Terry. Come to the podium, give your name and address.
My name is Gloria Earl Marlowe. I live at three oh seven West Terry. Been there about three years now. We had a water main break recently on January sixteenth that brought mud and silt up through our toilets and sinks and floor drains. We had some of us major losses. I lost four feet of my walls all the way around, my floor tiles, my washer, my dryer, my vanity, the bathroom. Some of that I was able to replace by my own. Insurance paid to do the cleanup, which meant I lost my drywall and my floors. My neighbors, one neighbor lost everything in her son's room, his clothes, everything. She has nothing left for us. And I have other neighbors that also had damage. We applied to the city for compensation and were immediately denied. I don't feel there was any real investigation. We had two more water main breaks on my street a couple of weeks ago. And one of my neighbors talked to the man working on the line who said that the mud and silt was not cleared from the manhole at the end of the street. And that's why everything backed up into our basement. I was just wondering if there is in some way that at least some of them can get some kind of compensation to help them, you know, replace clothing for their children. And one lost his entire bedroom. He's only ten years old. I replaced my washer and dryer myself. I was fortunate I didn't lose my furnace or anything.
Have they applied for any compensation through the city?
Yeah, we all have. We all got the same letter on the same day.
So we have the letters.
Yeah, I have the letters here. It was just so fast. I don't know how they could have investigated anything. And they just turned us down flat. So I know that the water mains are old and that the weather was partly responsible. But if they had neglected to clean out the lines before they turned the water back on, I think the city is partially responsible, even to some extent, even if they could just help some of them out a little bit, just to compensate. I don't care if I get anything. I got my washer and dryer to be close over here. So I would just like to ask if there's some way we can get some help.
Let's talk about this at the work study, Ms. Colbiter. And we can come to some kind of, I think we need to talk about the work study.
It's one of these things that the law is, everyone feels bad. We all feel bad. And well, sorry this happened. But the law is pretty clear on this.
I know about it actually.
Yeah, the law, the law is clear on this. And that's probably why the letter was received that way is because the law is so clear on this issue. So it is a very unfortunate thing that all of us have homes and that we can empathize with what the law speaks and guides us to to these issues. And that's what has been followed in this situation as well.
There, I know other actions we can take. I think some of my neighbors are talking about that, which I think is just, I don't think there's going to be much success with that and the length of time and everything. So I was just really hoping something could be done for them. But I understand it. There's only so much you you all can do personally. Well, thank you for letting me speak about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please attorney Schwartz, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I mean, if the city were to, let's say, do something for six, eight people, I mean, this is the, this is the residence revenue funds that's doing this. Okay. It's not something we can do. It's not, it's just not something you can do.
What what you just stated is true, is the laws are in place to protect the community as a whole unit. And if something was done, that would be using these funds from the other community members to compensate. And it's just not what can be done. And that's why insurance policies, insurance coverage is so very, very important. And over time, the law has evolved to make it so clear in certain circumstances because of these situations, because all of us, we deeply feel when when something happens like that, we all have homes and basements and such. But at the end of the day, we have insurance to be utilized for a reason. And we can't use our neighbors' funds to fund other neighbors for things like that. And that's why the law is how it is. And truly, we all feel we're your neighbors too, but we have to follow the law. It was a shot.
We're, we're very sorry. We're very compassionate to your situation. Unfortunately, we have to fall within those guidelines. And as much as we hate those guidelines, it's protecting the rest of the other seventeen thousand residents as well.
I've heard from several members of this group what a nice person you are and how much they like you and what a good person you are in the community. And I feel badly is don't have, you know, a, an easy remedy for you under the laws as they're written now.
I appreciate, I just appreciate that it goes in the time of these times.
Thank you. We have Malcolm Hutter, eleven oh six East Terry. How you doing, Mom?
Okay. Yeah, so I moved in thirty five years ago and looking for a house. And I said, oh, this house doesn't have a driveway, so I'm not going to move in here. And she said, well, look, there's parking on this street, there's parking on that street. Russell, Perry. And, oh, okay, I guess we got plenty of parking. Well, then somewhere along that thirty five years I've been here, someone come along and, you know, started ticketing people and eventually putting up a sign for parking on the street. And, you know, I was allowed a couple of parking passes that I had to pay for. I don't know why I should have to pay for parking in front of my house, but that's the way it goes. But then, then, you know, my son moved in there when he was just a baby. He's now driver's age and he's got a car too. And they only allow two parking permits. I think someone should give me a free permanent parking passes or at least as many parking passes as there are drivers living in my household. In this last year additionally, I was told I couldn't keep my pop-up camper in the backyard. I can't keep my utility trailer in the backyard. I've had trailers in the backyard for years. I used to have a boat in the backyard for years. Now, all of a sudden, I can't keep stuff in my backyard like that now. You know, what good is that, having a backyard that you can't keep your camper in the backyard? I'd like to open up my camper and air it out and work on it, you know, keep it up the snuff. And utility trailer, you know, is a handy thing to have. At the moment, I don't know where my camper is. My son put it in someone else's backyard. I'd like to have it in my backyard and maybe even have a project once in a while that I could do in my backyard, you know, a windmill bolt or something like that. Now, why can't I have my backyard back, you know? Why can't I park in front of my house without having to pay for it? Why can't my son have a parking space? He gets a ticket every once in a while. Most of the time he's not there, but he, you know, every once in a while, he'd like to be there on a Friday and not get ticketed. What can be done about this? Why can't I park my trailers in the backyard?
I don't know about your trailers, but you have a driveway?
No, I do not.
You don't have a driveway?
Well, there's another thing I have. I do have a driveway. It's about five feet, you know, it's maybe on the city's property, if that's what you call it, between the sidewalk and the street. And so it didn't bother my son so much that he couldn't park, didn't have a parking pass because he parked that sideways on that piece of concrete. And then someone come along and tell him he can't do that. Give him a ticket for parking on that piece of concrete. You know, he couldn't park on the grass either, you know? So he's actually got a couple of cars and I don't know what happened to his classic car. He took that to someone else's backyard, I guess. Why can't I, why can't this be the Hazel Park I moved into? Let me park my stuff there. Park on, have these three parking pads on the street.
You've talked to Mr. Jones, DPW, about the permits?
I didn't have an opportunity to talk to him. There's a gal there.
Maybe he's the one that investigates whether or not there's permits allowed for certain areas and whether or not there's, you know, justification for those permits.
Only allow two permits. And I don't know why they can't make a permanent permit for me. I've been there thirty five years and I should have a place where I can park my cars all the time, you know?
Everybody has to renew their permit annually. And I think it's what, four dollars?
Five annually?
Five. It went up.
Fifteen dollars.
Our ordinance says two.
Of course, then, you know, you don't pay attention to that when it runs out, you know, because it's just there and you're able to park there. And if it runs out and someone comes along and gives you a parking ticket again, you know?
Sir, I'm going to give you my card and I want you to, did you fill out one of those sheets?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have his? I'm going to put this over there. I want you to write your phone number on there. I'll call you either Mr. Jones or myself. We'll call you and we'll take a look at your situation. In terms of your trailers, there are rules for what you can park, on what type of surfaces and how many you can have in a yard. And we'll talk about that and take a look at that too when you call me. Okay? I'm going to give you my card right now.
The, the discussion of parking on lawns comes up often online and here in this, in this room. Part of that ordinance is to prevent damage from underground utilities because they're not, the, the ground is not supportive enough to protect gas lines, plumbing, sewage lines from the weight of vehicles when they're parked on an un, an unimproved surface, like a, like a cement pads have to be thicker for driveway areas or areas where cars and vehicles are parked. And that's part of the reason why that ordinance for not parking on your lawn or parking in your grass is so important.
Well, I don't have, I'm running all through my yard, you know? I know where the sewer runs.
Right. Look, I'm going to have to take a look at your situation in its totality. Okay? We try to have things stored in the rear yard, but there's rules different, like certain things need to be stored on what's called an improved surface. And that's for a reason, as Alyssa said, for weight. Also, if there's a motor or something like that, there's a problem with discharge of chemicals and different fluids that come from machinery and automobiles that can seep in the groundwater. So these ordinances are pretty standard, like across everywhere in southeast Oakland County. So I'll be happy to take a look at your situation and listen to what you've got to say and see if we can't find some solutions for you. Okay?
Okay. Well, then, maybe I'm up with some money for some cement, if that's what I need to do.
Well, I wouldn't go all that far, but we'll see what we can do to help you. Okay?
Okay.
Witty fifteen ten Camden Burnfield. Counselor.
Good evening. Actually, this is my first time in front of a Hazel Park city council meeting, but I live at fifteen ten Camden, which is just across the west end, also known as East Cape on the Hazel Park side, or West Cape, I'm sorry. But basically, when I was on the city council in Ferndale in twenty nineteen, we also had some anti-conversion therapy ordinance to prohibit that dangerous and harmful conduct. And one thing we did in Ferndale is we started mimicking our ordinance after other cities that have passed that. What that was, it was civil infraction, a municipal civil infraction. Now, the ordinance, I was actually just looking at this today, I read it multiple times. And then I noticed, I said, oh, there's a meeting tonight. So when I looked at it though, I noticed that Hazel Park's also proposing a municipal city or civil infraction. That being the case, that is in line with what a lot of the cities are doing. The state has no statute in this area whatsoever, and I commend the city for taking proactive action towards this issue. But one thing we did in Ferndale, we became the first in the state to criminalize the conduct. We passed our ordinance for a misdemeanor carrying up to ninety days in jail and a five hundred dollar fine, which is the maximum permitted for a city to do under the Home Code City Act. And so I just rise today supporting what you're doing, but I would ask before your final passage, and I'm not sure how the first reading, second reading, we had none of that for a while, but before you pass it on, I guess the second reading will prove it, you would consider amending that to a misdemeanor carrying up to ninety days in jail and a five hundred dollar fine. My goal, I mean, Ferndale's the only place where it's criminal action in the state. My goal is to have a lot of cities criminalize this, hopefully have state catch on, make it a state statue, which would be great for the next state representative. So big project, right? So anyways, I rise in support and I would just ask you to consider that before final passage. And the other thing I want to say is I deal with this. And the other thing I want to say is, I deal with Ms. Schwartz quite often, uh, normally we're adversaries, we're opposing each other in court on a criminal defense theory. Uh, and so I just wanted to say you have a tough city attorney, but extremely fair, extremely reasonable, and we've always been managing to work things out, and when we couldn't, we do it in a very cordial manner, so, I appreciate your service and want to recognize the lawyer, whatever lawyer.
Thank you very much, it's very kind, and it's always nice to work with professional attorneys who knows the law and is prepared.
Thank you, I appreciate it, so, thank you for your consideration with the ordinance, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyways, it takes us close, maybe more for public discussion, anyone else?
I would like to know what ordinance you were talking about.
It's on the, meant to, second reading, human rights ordinance. It's on our third item for today, he's got a copy.
Item three on the agenda.
The conversion therapy ban. The conversion therapy ban.
I thought it was something like that, but it's in the beginning, I didn't clarify that.
We can talk about it here in a little bit. Uh, move down to close public discussion, moves to the consent agenda, one through ten, counsel, it'll be your pleasure. Move approval of the consent agenda items one through ten, support. A discussion. Censure. Motion passes. Is there anyone here for two, three, four, five, one, Dequender? Uh, auto repair shop, Visa shop. Uh, seven oh four East Nine Mile, Hazel Park Medical Building LLC. Seven twelve East Nine Mile, HC Building, Medical Building Services. Two three oh five three, uh, Dequender, architectural. Archive. Okay, you lay here? Am I, my glasses are bad. I didn't go to the doctor. Yeah, you've got your business license approved. Takes us to administrative reports, item one, ordinance to amend HPMC's section twelve point five zero, street maintenance parking regulations, second reading.
Mr. Chairman, this is on second meeting, you guys probably briefed on this at the last meeting, this is, uh, establishing a fee and giving us more options so that we don't have to write a larger ticket.
Counsel?
I'll move approval, um, of the, to have the ordinance, uh, HPMC chapter twelve point five zero, street maintenance parking regulations.
Second.
Any discussion? Censure. Passes, second reading. Ordinance to amend HPMC's section five point four two, landlords and tenants, second reading. Counsel?
Mr. Chairman, the administration recommends approval, this is an ordinance that requires a designation of a responsible party for landlord license.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move approval of the amendment to the chapter, you know, HPMC chapter five point four two, landlords and tenants, second reading, support.
Discussion. Censure. Passes. Amendment to Human Rights Ordinance, second reading.
Mr. Mayor, this is second reading of, uh, an ordinance to prohibit conversion therapy in the city of Hazel Park.
Do we want to pass a motion on this and then have discussion, do we want to have discussion before?
Uh, well, I'll, I'll move approval, uh, of an ordinance, of, uh, an ordinance to amend title eighteen, Human Rights, the City of Hazel Park Municipal Code of Ordinances to add chapter eighteen point zero three, prohibition of conversion therapy, sections eighteen point zero three point zero one zero through eighteen point zero three point zero nine zero, and provide penalties for violations.
I'll second with discussion.
All right, go ahead with your discussion.
Uh, the question I have, uh, counselor, um, well, counselor, uh, thank you for coming and for pointing this out, um, the author of the ordinance and, uh, cribbed heavily from Hazel, or from Ferndale, so thank you for the work that you did. Uh, I did go back and forth, uh, with the penalty section and I know our city staff did as well. Question I have for our city attorney is if we are able to make a substantive change in penalties and be able to pass this on second reading, or if that would require an additional meeting?
I believe an additional meeting would be required if you want to do that because research and other information would have to be forthcoming. That's a pretty significant change because you're looking at somebody restricted on their liberties, so definitely.
But we do have the latitude to pass this now, as is, and at a future meeting, uh, alter the penalty section.
Right.
That's true.
Yes, absolutely, and I think that'd be the administration's recommendation at this point. Uh, in this particular form, the, uh, ordinance is well researched and we're comfortable with it from a legal perspective, uh, a recommendation is pass this, pass the ordinance, this will pass the ordinance, it will take effect in a later date, we can uh, bring you some information about whether or not, uh, we feel that it would be, uh, recommended and, uh, possible to amend it.
In the interest of getting this on the books now, I plan on supporting the ordinance as is.
We have a motion, we have supporting more discussion. In censure. Passes. If you want to make the recommendation, we'll talk about the work study and move forward with another change in that ordinance. Show cause hearing for sixteen oh five East George. Mr. Finch.
Is anyone here representing sixteen oh five East George?
Mr. Finch.
Evening, Counselor, uh, we've got an extremely developed head structure, it's, uh, literally sinking. Doors collapsing throughout the structure, ceilings collapsing, extreme amount of mold growth. It's a dangerous building, and the garage is, is probably a top floor around soon right now.
Looks pretty good.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's only hundred sixty-seven square feet, non-conforming size-wise, uh, no basement. And, uh, it's just in severe condition.
Thank you for your research, sir, and your inspection. Is there anyone here for sixteen oh five East George, once again?
Anyone want to speak about it?
Open up public hearing, anyone wishes to speak on it. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, based upon the following, the structure is non-conforming and re- and will require to be brought to twelve hundred square feet with a basement or thirteen hundred square feet without a basement. Uh, Darren Brown failed to follow the hearing officer's orders dated January twelfth, twenty twenty-two. And based on the inspection report by the building official that found the dwelling was a hundred percent dilapidated, with collapsing ceilings and flooring, plumbing, mechanical and electrical systems all being a hundred percent damaged and deteriorated, and the health and welfare and safety of the community of Hazel Park, I recommend that the property be demolished within thirty days.
Support. Any discussion on the issue? Censure. Passes. Reappointments to Recreation Advisory Board.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, the, uh, administration respectfully requests the reappointments of Melissa Baldwin and Amanda Klein to the Recreation Advisory Board.
Summon. Support.
Second. We were, I think we're all waiting for somebody to do a whole.
Melissa's here, she was here.
There was no pause on the people. There was a pause on the motion.
She was here at the last one, too. Every time, I think. I thought you just reappointed her anyways, even though she wasn't on the list. She wasn't on the list, so it turns out she should have been on the list. So, thank you for coming again.
You. Uh, it takes us to the new business, the vent information.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, the City of Hazel Park has been, uh, approached, uh, by an organization, representatives of that organization are here in the, uh, audience tonight, they are requesting, uh, a special use event for, uh, an outdoor cannabis event. And, uh, they contacted the City of Hazel Park and they requested approval. The ordinance, uh, says that approval rests with my office, but this event, in terms of the size and scope of this event, this is not an event I am comfortable approving, uh, on my own, uh, without city council input and approval. Uh, there are a lot of questions that we had in our initial meeting with, uh, these individuals. Uh, it's not a philosophical thing, it's simply a size and scope kind of a situation as to whether or not we can accommodate them. So, the individuals are here in the audience, uh, if they'd like to approach the podium and, uh, state their case and explain to the council a little bit about, uh, the size, scope and nature of the event that they are requesting. I think that would be helpful.
Hello, I'm Attorney Thomas Levine of Kansas County. One of the members of the group, uh, planning this event. So, the, um, this would go under one of the state licenses, um, that's permitted these, although very highly regulated, everything will have to be fenced in and with the opaque, um, fencing so that the public cannot see what's going on inside. It's proposed to be at, uh, Green Acres, uh, Park. Baseball diamonds are there. So, we're proposing a ticketed event with a limited number of tickets sold. And we're willing to work alongside you in terms of where is that at limit. But, uh, our, our consultants are, um, you know, working along with us as well uh, to make sure that it's, uh, safe and it's in, uh, that's interest of the neighborhood and everything. You would look for off-site parking with shuttle buses to bring the majority of, uh, attendees to the study. Uh, so we're working on that, and, um, so, it's proposed to be June eighteenth and nineteenth. And we were, uh, we were, we were thinking of doing something special for Juneteenth, in conjunction with that, but not June nineteenth, then. And, um, as an attorney in the space, um, we'll be sure to, uh, keep it compliant, you know, with all the state regulations and whatever stipulations, uh, according to your ordinance of, uh, look forward, go work alongside of you and answer any questions you have, really, now.
So, one of the things that concerns me is that you said that you guys are looking for parking to be able to shuttle, um, I'd rather you come to us with already a plan on that.
Sure.
Because that's really concerning, because it's all neighborhood around there.
Right.
And the softball field tends to be the overflow parking for events there.
Right.
Um, so, where exactly are, have you guys already looked or spoken to anyone?
So, we've been reaching out to the property management of the, uh, the, the owners of the, what is now the warehousing facility where the racetrack used to be, to potentially use that parking lot. Uh, we're also working with Jeff at the city attorney's, uh, sorry, uh, city manager's office to communicate with, uh, Ferndale's Public Schools, to discuss using, uh, the school on park site that's straight across the street and directly adjacent as another potential parking area. Then, of course, we're using the third, as you can see, the third baseball diamond there for our, you know, handicap and, you know, accessibility parking, uh, there on the site. Um, our original event plan did call for us to use the softball diamond as the overflow parking. Uh, unfortunately, the temporary fencing that was necessary to secure the rest of the park became definitively expensive. Since that this, these two diamonds already exist within the eight-foot required fencing by the, uh, the fencing required by the MRA, it made more sense from a planning standpoint to take advantage of those existing structures.
Also, to, to help defer some of the traffic problems, uh, one of the ideas that we had would be to print up signs and leave those signs at the end of every block, letting people know that we had just made parking, that we don't suggest parking that way. We'll do everything on our end to, to, you know, we want to be able to have this here, anyway. So, I agree with what could possibly come up in the work.
Uh, other than signs, what are your plans to mitigate parking issues if people are to park on those side streets?
Volunteer patrols, so having, that's the whole staff, uh, here basically walking.
People you're not going to pay.
Well, it, they'll be compensated with tickets to the show and they'll work a shift in exchange for access to the, the show.
Interesting. Um, I have a question about the legality of the proximity of this event to the school in that area. Melissa.
I would need more time to look into this one, thank you.
It's five, it's five hundred feet from, like, one of our dispensaries to the school, right, five hundred?
Five hundred, yep.
I would.
But there's that.
The Jardon, right there.
Yeah.
You're not talking about Roosevelt.
I'm talking about both, because there's one right, there's one at your corner, and there's one in the corner.
Roosevelt School still. Just Jardon.
The other, the other school has students, I don't know what type of student, uh, do you body have, but I see them come and go, I walked off. But there's schools on both. Like, yeah, the, across the street from that parking, from that, uh, from that baseball. It's an elementary and, uh, yeah.
It's a bilingual language school.
Well, there's nothing.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, there's, there's nothing restricting it, uh, in the state regulations, and I don't see it in the local order.
Let me ask you one more question. What are you doing for filtration of air?
So, um, our event plan, if you, the map in front of you there, you could see, uh, I don't know what color for you guys, but winter. Sorry, okay, so, you, you see the ring around the, the, the main state area? There's the large tents there, they could be green or red, uh, in a colored version on your screen. Those are air-conditioned consumption tents, yes, those are the ones that ring around the main, the concert venue area. That's where the consumption is going to be designated. Those tents, uh, can have capacity of five hundred people each, the thirty by sixty tent. That's, uh, with a crowd density of two people per seat. Uh, so slightly more than COVID, but, uh, you know, those requirements are slowly being repealed at times. So, uh, the, each tent has a, uh, capacity of about five hundred people, they're air-conditioned, they've got their own generators. Uh, that's how we're gonna be handling, uh, the air flow there.
And that's something covered in the state ordinance.
Uh, it's technically not allowed, I'm sorry, it's not required by the, the state laws, but it's something that we're doing because we want to be compliant, make sure everybody in the community is comfortable with it, that it's not just gonna be blowing around the neighborhood, you know, we want to be respectful of the people who live here.
That's my biggest concern. I don't want to offend the neighborhood.
Sure, we want to be invited back there, we don't want to offend anything.
We'll be the first ones to hear about it.
So, the planning software said that the crowd area is sufficient for fifteen thousand five hundred people at a measurement of three people per square meter.
Yeah.
I mean.
And, and immediately we think that's a little high, too. And that's why we said ten thousand.
Yeah.
At, at the city manager, who's the project.
Said, uh, hell no, no chance, no way.
So, we're really open to what you guys have to, you know, to guess, and then obviously I'm gonna have to run the numbers on what that looks like in terms of our tickets and budgeting.
I guess since we don't know, neither one of us, how, how this is going to play out and whether or not it can handle smoke or handle the facility, the parking, and so on, so on.
Right.
I think a more realistic number would be mine, maybe a couple of thousand.
There's a thing that has actually been for the last nine years had, you know, this event been issued. Uh, the turnout for that event, I don't think is over by over thirty-five hundred.
Yeah.
And where is that event hosted?
Niles Machina, it's up at, hi, I'm sorry.
Right, and is it in a, in a city park in the middle of a residential area? It's not. I'm answering your question for you, it is not. Correct, which is not a city park in the middle of a residential neighborhood. Okay.
The, so the question that I had is, what is your, what's your break-even? Uh, because I know Ghostface Killah and Ray Kwan ain't cheap, so I know, uh,
Yeah.
to make sure that, uh, you guys are having a festival uh, where you're able to break even or make a little money, but we're still able to keep tickets at a level that we're comfortable with. Uh, just curious if there's, you have like an estimated amount of attendees that would allow you to accomplish that?
I don't think we would make money if there was less than three thousand people there. Um, I think that in my ideal world, it would be down to two and a four or five. Um, we'd do the best. Um, obviously, we're gonna work with the two guys, lay out for us, and we may have to push ticket prices up.
To give you, for instance, we have a Memorial Day Festival here.
Yeah.
Runs four days. And we run out of parking.
Yeah.
Out of a couple of those days.
And we use, that's why.
We use the area that you're, that you're looking at. Is what we use.
If you've chosen the, the area that you wanted to use it in, that's where our parking is. And, you know, I, we do, you know, a couple thousand a day, I think down Memorial Day. But the parking is where you guys want to have it and there's no place else to do the parking.
Parking's always been an issue for that Memorial Day Festival, most of those people walk there from the neighborhoods.
Right, yeah, so.
So you gotta figure there's at least forty percent of those do not drive cars.
As Jared pointed out, we had originally bought to use the whole site, right? And, and we were going to use that one site for overflow park. But then, as you said, when we looked at the fencing, it just, there was just no way, right? So I would propose if, if we do not secure the parking at the facility, uh, which was the racetrack. That we use the tree in area. We, we were already gonna have a, an insurance policy if we tore up in the field of the softball diamond. Uh, we're just moving it from one corner of the park to the other where we put overflow park.
I think that we need time to investigate how this is going to work and I think you need time to repropose. So come back to us at the next meeting.
Um, I have a question, what other events of this size have you run previously, or is this your first?
So Hollis here has been involved in the, the cannabis, the High Times cannabis stuff, that was actually started originally. For the very first, uh, cannabis that I experienced.
For twelve years I booked, we utilize awareness show that was still within trade center. Artists, uh, High Times decided to come into the state of Michigan and they approached us and said, hey, would you book this? So we've been at the very forefront of putting events cannabis related. And trying to navigate, you know, what that takes and ensure that everyone's happy and it's not publicly.
When I tried to Google the name of the, um, group hosting this event, I couldn't find any online presence, so that's where my concern was.
Exactly because, um, these temporary event licenses, these legal temporary event licenses are very, very new. The state really only started issuing them last summer. The company that has the event license itself, I think it was licensed in October of last year, correct? Yeah, so the, the, the industry itself is very, very new right now and just beginning to get regulations. But we, our application for the state, they, they changed the forms and released a whole new set of forms for that. Which actually changed something that we've already sent over to, to Jeff and Ed at their office. Uh, an adaptation of sign which is no longer even required. Uh, so we're dealing with a very, uh, fluid regulatory environment, shall we say.
The, in the spirit of yes before no, I'd love a, a fully fleshed out proposal, uh, at the next meeting addressing all the questions that we've had. And, um, I'm sure we can also, uh, ping, and, and the city administration, if we have anything additional, we can follow up with you guys. And then Jared on a personal note, appreciate your work on top one.
And then we're, we're gonna have some questions for our administration also to forward to.
Yeah, look, I support something like this going through, it's not happening.
I really appreciate your input, you know, we want to be.
We just have, we just have some concerns of the space that you're trying to utilize.
Yeah, I, I don't think there's any philosophical problem with it, I think there's just a problem with the size and scope.
Yeah.
You know, we gotta make sure.
The continuity of our neighborhoods is our utmost priority and as the co-chair of the Arts Council and the, um, I'm, I sit on, I don't, this year I stepped down, but, um, I've been on the Planning Commission for our art fair for the last four, almost six, six years at this point. Um, there's a lot that goes into it and a lot of that is making sure that the neighborhood continuity is intact. And that we are not inconveniencing the people that live there or the other residents in our city, and that is my biggest concern with this. Um, I love the idea of bigger events coming to our community, I love the idea of progressive events, like this is very, you know, de-stigmatizing. Um, but I don't want to do that at the cost of our city and the people that live here.
And also we're on the border with another community too, so we're really going to need to involve them. Or at least make them aware of the planning process with this because it could impact, uh, their residents as well. And probably we're gonna do more than painted signs, we're probably gonna have to block those, uh, those streets out there. Uh, during this event to ensure that there's no spill of the parking, so.
As well as.
We're gonna have to work with Ferndale.
Police to monitor and survey the area.
Yeah.
Because we do pay for our police to monitor our, uh, Memorial Day Festival as well.
Sure, and that's something that I brought up with our meeting, um, in the last meeting, so we even have that line up to our budget as well. We also have, uh, you know, obviously work from secure top for a lot of the homeowners in the country, so.
Like I said, I think there's more homework to be done here. Uh, let's get back to us at the next meeting, uh, which will be in two weeks.
And what your attendance is on your, that, uh, Memorial Day.
We were just talking about that, it's, it's, yeah, we'll, we'll get you that, I would say.
Four days worth.
You know, two to three thousand a day, maybe.
Couple thousand a day.
Uh, the, the art fair, this last year we had a record number of, um, twenty-five hundred, I think, per day. But that is people coming and going, right? It's not a situation where people are there all day, staying all day. And that, um, took up all of the parking that you guys are using for part of your event, including almost the entire baseball field and all of the recreation center parking.
And we run beer tasting in the festival as well as the parking areas also got all the rides in it. So that takes up some of our parking as well. But we utilize that overflow in the, where you're proposing your site. And then again, we have a, a traffic flows in and out, but then again, you know, if it's a hot day and the beer's flowing well, they're gonna stay a little longer.
Right.
So.
Yeah, we, we, I, my, uh, my city attorney Melissa Schwartz, she's got question. Counsel, if you think of questions this week, let me know, let's plan, let's plan and sitting down together, uh, next week. Uh, some of us are out of town, uh, at a conference in Lansing for a couple of days next week, but maybe on, uh, Thursday. Or, uh, Monday, we can sit down, probably most likely Thursday and see if we can, uh, flush this out and get a more, uh, in focused proposal together for them to consider, okay?
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Uh, what were your, what, guys, what were your hours?
Oh, they were, we're proposing, uh, based on, based on your hours for the other, um, festivals that have music there. Uh, open gates at eleven AM, close at ten thirty.
Okay.
Seven forty-five was what they, um, the, I'm sorry, I forget her name, but the assistant at the Parks and Rec. She's where I got these numbers from, she said that they do a hard stop at ten forty-five for music at other events.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, I will.
All right.
Yeah.
Well, we talked out in the dell, let's, uh, see what can be, what's better information. Communications from department heads.
Actually, uh, Your Honor, I've got an item for new business.
Oh, sure.
I passed along to a resolution to, uh, the other members of council. Uh, and it's a resolution supporting, uh, entheogenic plant practices and declaring the investigation and arrest of adult individuals involved with the use of entheogenic plants be the lowest priority for the city of Hazel Park. What this would effectively accomplish is it would decriminalize entheogenic plants in the city of Hazel Park. But, uh, in the interest of making sure that the public has the ability to provide input. Uh, I move that this resolution be addressed at the city council meeting on March twenty-second and that we provide, uh, members of our community as well as medical professionals, the opportunity to provide input before we vote on. Support.
Why do we want to pass this at the next meeting instead of having a, a work study to talk about this particular issue that I have very little knowledge of? And, uh, from what I'm reading, nothing against what you're proposing, I was not, uh, always for this type of, uh, psychedelic drugs. And I understand there's medical purposes in why they would benefit certain, you know, aspects. But, uh, I'd like to have a little more discussion of what, and I, and I appreciate you bringing people in to talk about it. Better educate us as well, but, uh, you know, cocaine's illegal too.
Yeah, I don't think he's.
But it also has medical purposes.
Yeah, that's why I think.
I guess that's my, that's my example.
At a, at a work study.
That's my example, that's what I was bringing up. So we'll have it at the next meeting.
Complaining cocaine with entheogenic is a, a very drastic, uh, statement, just, just to say. Many things were medications back in the day.
I looked forward to your work study.
You gotta have those, those clinical differences so we can work it out. Thank you, thanks, Your Honor. Any other agenda items for the next meeting that anyone wants to propose?
Do you have a, do you have an executive session?
We will have an executive session, yes.
Anyone else want to add anything to the next meeting, please let Mr. Klobuchar know. Put on the work study to talk about it or put on the agenda. And we'll go from there.
It'll be, it'll be both a work study and a meeting, so if you guys can actually be good to take action, so.
Okay. Communications from the department heads, any department heads want to talk? I see Mr. Jones coming up.
Oh, Mayor Council, uh, just would like to say we started our next phase of our tree program. Um, started Monday, um, Woodruff to Myers, Russell to John R. All the homes in that area have been notified of the program. Um, ideally, we will be trimming trees, but some trees do have to be removed. Uh, we do leave a card on the door and do send a letter to the, uh, property owner and take it to the rest or whatever. For everybody to be aware of what's going on in that area. And also, um, yard base collection this year, curbside will start March twenty-eighth, Monday, March twenty-eighth. That's actually, uh, at least a week sooner than in the past, so that, uh, that's all your hot topic, uh, coming up pretty soon.
It was in my notes to ask you as soon as you brought it up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Mr. Young.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just, uh, wanted to, uh, ask if there was any questions I.
I'd like to have a little more detailed explanation as to the situation on the area.
Okay.
It was just up there, tell me what happened. A little more, I read the notes. So for the, for the audience's identification.
We received a call on, uh, Sunday evening, fifteenth of January. Of course, if we know if they're not there, uh, twenty-four seven, we respond twenty-first of July. Call came on about eight-thirty in the evening. Calls went out to our crew, we had a member punch in at nine. Response time being it was eight, nine o'clock on a Sunday and the temperatures were moving cold. Keep yourself prepped to head outside if you're not exactly eating proper. Water sewer personnel arrived out there probably about nine o'clock to start evaluating what was happening. They found a water, the water main break, uh, had overflowed into a sewer. Uh, depositing some sand and water down the sewer line. Uh, the water was shut down on the street to stop its flow. Uh, about nine-thirty remaining personnel showed up after, uh, the supervisor arrived out there shortly after nine. Other personnel came up on nine-thirty, by ten forty-five, uh, I'm sorry, by nine-thirty, we, uh, had a batch of trucks out there and began cleaning the main sewer line to break it open and allow the flow again. Uh, the sewer was then, I guess you would say we, we considered it cleared by two-thirty in the morning. Uh, the crew punched out about two forty-five, about two forty-seven in the evening, I'm not sorry, in the morning, that was Monday morning, two forty-five, they were back in the same location by seven AM that day. I joined them out there myself. Um, the water main was repaired and completed by about nine-thirty. The sewer was still looking, uh, positive flow. We decided not to, uh, clean it the next day on Tuesday because it's been cold, uh, that, the back there had a lot of water lines in it and they'd been free. Really got two problems, so be careful what we do. Recognize that the weather would be proper on Wednesday when the temps warmed up. So we did another, uh, batch of sewer clean just to make sure we didn't. Several weeks later, it's another main break in the general area, uh, nothing very unusual about. Okay. Uh, researched the, uh, portal, which is our connection to Detroit Water Sewer. To see if there was any type of, uh, water fluxes, uh, from the pressure, if it did look like we received any type of, uh, change in water pressures. And, uh, so that, uh, tells us that at least we didn't get a big blast of pressure through the system at that time. And then we spoke with, uh, Myron on Thursday first and, uh, regarding the claims that were submitted and again, uh, giving the same information.
Well, thank you for clarifying for the public.
Uh, there was, they made adjustments on the grant.
Very good, very good, Jeff.
I wanted to thank you for applying for those grants.
Yes, thank you.
The last thing I had was, uh, the, uh, going in with that sewer warranty program and we'll probably have to receive a letter.
Signed up.
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know, uh, it was notified that the website wasn't accepting anybody signing the website. They'll go in and go in, that was like immediate, that has been corrected, attempted to, uh, like, from the, the information on that program through the web. That is all I have.
Thank you, Tim, as always, you are the consummate professional.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other department heads wishing to come up, give an update? Fire chief story.
Evening, Mayor Council.
Good evening.
Uh, daylight saving time ends March thirteenth. We have to change the smoke detector battery. Uh, we have a program in the community, we give a single smoke detector to every resident. If it's acid, you bring your ID, that's where we live here, we would be more than glad to give it to you. If you need, uh, help installing it, we will come in.
All right. Thank you.
Fire department, do them a.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, chief story. Thank you, sir.
Any other department heads? Jared from HR.
Jared from HR, Lacy from Finance.
All right, that moves us to the, uh, communications from our city attorney, Mr. Schwartz.
Just want to congratulate, as I think, um, Mr. Makovich. Um, Mr. Makovich, with the hearing officer, works so hard. So definitely a well deserved recognition for his contributions to the city. And, uh, once again, thank you Diane for all that you did for all of us to keep everything moving along here. Long, hard hours and she bears the part, so thank you everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Klobuchar.
Well, yes, as we sit here, uh, today in March of two thousand twenty-two, Michigan's municipal finance does remain fundamentally broken. So, uh, I don't want anybody to forget that. Uh, before Stephanie Chang left, I did remind her that almost all of my problems in the city of Hazel Park come from the state of Michigan's short sighted stupid policies. So, uh, I, I can't be any more blunt than that, uh, both parties are blamed in various degrees all the time. So, you know, uh, Mike, when you get up there, remember that, because I'm never gonna let you forget it. So, uh, you know.
I wouldn't expect you to ever let.
So I just had to say that. I want to thank everybody again. I've been humbled by all the wonderful comments and everything. And, uh, like I said, I'll do my very best to, uh, to live up to those and, uh, I'll thank my wife Diane one more time for all that she's put up with throughout the years, thank you. And a couple of things here, uh, city council pictures are done. Uh, we couldn't hang them today because they were in court all day, so as soon as, uh, we have, uh, uh, a, a break with court, we'll make sure that we hang those pictures and, uh, you all will be forever, uh, immortalized on the back wall of the courtroom here in the city of Hazel Park. Few weeks ago, several of you and all of you at one time or another have talked about improving our communications, uh, systems with the city of Hazel Park. So to update you on a few things, first of all, uh, we're trying very hard to get, uh, our cable TV station back up and running. We've been in contact with them, we, uh, agreed to this contract many months ago, they had problems, uh, getting parts. And they're apologizing and we look forward to having those repairs done as soon as, uh, we can schedule them with their parts and their equipments and actually make the repairs. Uh, the next thing we're looking at is other forms of communication. And, uh, we're meeting with a, a, a second, uh, meeting with, uh, one of the providers, uh, tomorrow morning, uh, with our department heads. So they can take a look at that one. So they can take a look at that one. Uh, but in the meantime, uh, we met with uh Nixle, which is a communication service that will allow us to send out uh. Uh, emergency and important uh advisory messages to the uh city of Hazel Park. And uh, that was a very.
Via text, right?
Via text. So the resident would sign up for this service and uh, police department, the fire department, my office, uh, water, public works, anybody who would need to make emergency notifications. Uh, can do so, it's any resident that signs up for that, so there won't be any, uh, well, I didn't know there was a snow emergency. You know, if you sign up for the Nixle alert, so uh, that is within my spending authority to buy it myself, so I'm gonna do that. But it's uh, it's three thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars for the first year and seventy-two cents. If any of you would like to make a motion to approve that, even though it's unnecessary, uh, feel free to do so because uh, I think this is a good program. And it will definitely uh add a communications capability to our city for a very small.
So I'm gonna. Can we do that right now, I make a motion to approve the spending to, for just the Nixle program for the city of Hazel Park?
Okay.
Okay.
More discussion.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll get that uh taken care of and let them know.
He gets emails from me monthly about them, so.
From, from all of you, but like I said, wanna make sure we get something that. There are other providers out there, and again, you know, if, if it's not a match for us, I'm not gonna hesitate to tell you, this is a bad idea. So, you know, it's not necessary or it's not a match for us. But this one was, uh, Lyndon and I met with them, you know, last weekend, this, I think this one for the price is obvious, so.
What about people click fix?
We're gonna meet them tomorrow and like I said, that one will depend on what the department heads say and, you know, I'm, I may come back and tell you that's not a match. So uh, but uh, I may come back and tell you that it is, or a portion of it is, or we wait till next year, something like that. So, okay, but they're, we're gonna talk with them tomorrow, the staff. Okay, other than that, thank you all very much, appreciate all five of you guys.
Thank you. Communications from uh. Councilmember Carol.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations again, Ed, we won't uh laugh at you with all the compliments again.
And, and, but thank you and thank Mike and some thank you to Jack Lloyd who's watching, you know, at home. Because twenty years ago, you guys had uh the courage to make a very tough decision.
It was an interesting night, and it's been an interesting twenty years, and I wanna congratulate Gar for being recognized as well, his service. It's guys like him that help.
Yeah, he was on, he's one of the few people that actually predate me, so.
They're, they're professional.
Um, and thank all the department heads and all this, I, all the uh, the seeking the grants and the overtime and the work they put together and going above and beyond. If you, I just wanna reiterate with the uh. The uh anti-conversion therapy thing. Uh, if you have children, hug them every day and tell them you love them. I, I don't know how, how somebody could. Look at their child and see a problem when they, like that, I don't, it's not me. Anyway, if you love somebody, tell them, if you have kids, hug them every day and tell them, well, thanks for coming out.
Councilwoman.
Congratulations, Ed, once again.
Thank you.
Uh, I want to give a shout out to my lovely wife, Madeline, uh, my mother, Jan, uh, my sister, Abrielle. And uh, council member, Alyssa Sullivan, uh, city attorney Schwartz, and all of the fantastic women that I'm surrounded by. Uh, you all make me better and I sincerely appreciate your presence, uh, not just in my life, but on this body, so thank you. Uh, very, very proud of council for passing a conversion therapy ban um in the, in a time where states are essentially preventing the acknowledgement and existence of LGBTQ individuals. Uh, I appreciate that we're taking such a progressive stance and, you know, making sure that outdated and uh frankly dangerous medical practices have no place uh in our city. And uh, Councilor Woody, uh, thank you for coming today, I sincerely appreciate that, and I plan on looking at uh your recommendation in the following weeks and uh hopefully um addressing that. Uh, Mr. Young, uh, made a house call for me, so I just wanna give him a shout out and say thank you for your help bailing me out. So again.
No, Ed Klobuchar is my jail call.
No.
I didn't mean jail, I'm not.
Well, I did breathe a sink.
Councilperson Sullivan, your turn.
All right, thank you so much. Um, I want to also congratulate Ed and uh Mr. Makovich, Matt Makovich?
Yep, Gar Makovich.
I felt like I was saying it incorrectly, um, on your extended service here in our community. And um, for the integrity that brings to our community, um, longevity is really a sign of, of the greatness that our community has uh endured over the years. And the potential for our growth, and I'm really excited to always be a part of that. Um, I also wanna wish all of the women in this room and beyond, um, a very happy International Women's Day. Um, don't forget the um, the strides and the strength of the women in your community, the women in your family. Um, and that includes all women, uh, because trans women are also women. Um, and I want to say um, thank you to our uh department heads for coming out and um, it's, it's, uh, especially a big thank you to our um, water department, our DPW. That responds to the emergencies like broken water mains and other uh city emergencies during the weekends and the off-hours. Um, it's really a great service that we offer to our community and I'm grateful that we can get those things accomplished quickly so that the um, amount of damage that is incurred is, is lessened. Um, I wanna thank uh our neighbors for coming out and meeting today and um, and everybody else that attended today, so, and have a great afternoon or evening, I guess.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, uh, I'd like to echo what uh Alyssa said, um, cause I. I do think that the DPW and the water department are often unsung heroes, uh, out at two o'clock in the morning fixing things and then freezing.
They are.
Uh, thank you, uh, thank you very much, I appreciate that. Um, I too would like to uh thank all the women in my life, um, you know, for uh, I wouldn't be where I am, obviously, without all, especially my, my mother, obviously. But uh, but I would like to thank, happy International Women's Day, um, and uh also congratulations once again, so.
Thank you, my friend.
You're welcome.
Thank you, you're kind of uh extremist here, you're running for state rep? You wanna announce it?
Oh, I didn't think we were gonna talk about that, definitely.
Well, I'll announce it for you, my, our favorite pro, my big boss running for state rep.
Yeah, I'm not allowed to.
I just did it for you. So anyways, uh, pay attention and vote for our own here in Hazel Park. And uh, yeah, so we can have a bigger voice in Lansing. And with that being said, congratulations, Mr. Klobuchar, once again, another twenty-year run, one more twenty to go.
Um, no.
Diane was thrilled.
No, actually Diane said she'd kill me if I did retire, so.
Understandable all the time.
So.
I just had to get to it.
It won't, it won't be twenty, uh, but obviously there's more years behind me than there are in front of me.
I didn't want to, anyways, um, I'd like to say thank you to our staff, our department heads, for doing a great job and commitment. The commitment of having a good staff on our, behind uh every department. Head is telling you how well our city is ran. Fire department works twenty-four seven, they're out there, shift changes, our police officers, same way. In our DPW water, they are out there, whatever we have, when they're off-hours, there's a guy that's called. And he goes out and evaluates any situation if they need repair. And we gotta think about the hours they put in and the commitment they have. And that's something to be said within itself. I wanna thank my uh colleagues for having a good meeting here and uh, I'd like to thank Mr. Gar Makovich that I served under as a young commissioner and uh trained me a little bit how to. Get involved with the city more, you know, as much as I could in nineteen ninety-four, ninety-five, I think it was. I gotta think back more than twenty years, oh, anyways, I just wanted to uh say thank you once again. And I wanna say that, you know, till we lose our freedoms, like the folks in Ukraine. You know, those people have a little love, having that democracy that being changed, they're fighting for that freedom to be able to speak. We've all watched the news media, we've all seen little clips here and there. And to see what the protesters in Russia were doing and what the consequences for their speaking out is, would never be tolerated here in this country. Because we're used to it, we're accustomed to having our voice. And that's who we are as Americans. And thank God that we have this privilege to be here. And hopefully, the Ukraine, you know, people can actually have their privilege once more through the battles in which they struggle through. And let's all pray for those children and all the people there.
And, and Mr. Mayor, your, your comments are spot on, and you just reminded me of something important, I wanna thank the owners of uh Five Star Outdoor Billboards. Who gave us that wonderful billboard, they were in and they said, what do you want on your billboard? I said, Hazel Park stands with Ukraine.
Yep.
And uh, I'm, I'm so grateful for them and so grateful for all of you for standing up and supporting that. And the uh amount of support we've gotten in the community for that has been like extraordinary.
Yeah.
So uh, I wanna thank them uh very much.
It just goes to show that any little issues we have are miniscule to the problems these people are having. What we have today, the whatever issue you have, is nothing compared to people, you're having to leave your home with a shirt on your back and baby in tow. Come on, how harsh, this is harsh reality. And uh, this takes us all pause and have a reality check. So.
Mr. Mayor, we'll need a brief uh executive session to discuss uh union contract negotiations uh as well as uh MIWC versus.
All right, I get a motion to do so, please.
Of course.
Move to adjourn to executive session, executive session to discuss legal matter.
Sport, thank, thank you everybody for coming out, if you wanna stick around and wait for us to come back, you have a privilege, you can do as you please.